Okay, so we're going to reconvene from our closed session. Eliana, roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marquez. President Yosokam.
Here.
So, reporting out of closed session for January 19th, the board received an update on CSEA negotiations and no decisions were taken, no action was taken. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you'd like to speak to the board, if you're here in person, please fill out a card and give it to Eliana to my left. If you're at home, please fill out the Google Doc and we will call you accordingly. So, if you'd like to speak on the consent item, please let us know so we can pull those and move it to action because they're all voted together and not individually. So, with that, do I have any changes to the agenda? Having none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Aye.
We do not.
Do you want to put your mic on?
Sorry, before we move forward, were we supposed to pull item 10.2? I believe it was an email that I had sent to Dawn.
Yes, Cecilia, thank you. I was having some technical difficulties right there. I have two proposed changes to the agenda if we can still include.
Okay.
Okay, so we would like to pull item 10.2. That was actually supposed to be the purchase of the switches, which will be coming at the next board meeting.
And what is the other?
For item 10.5, the contractor name at the end is supposed to be Van and Boss. The attachment is correct, but the subject line item just has the wrong contractor name.
So, we're keeping that on, we're just changing the name, correct?
Correct.
So, since we just approved the agenda, do we need to make a new motion? Okay.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, guys.
The Redwood City School District Mental Health Program and Stanford University Collaborative.
Yes, and good evening, all board members and community members. This is a great report you're going to receive tonight. Starting, oh, wow, Alisa and Janet, two years ago, almost three years ago, we had a collaborative meeting. If Dr. Yoshi, he was here with us, Amy Gerstein was with us. I'm not sure Kirsten was with us or not yet, but you were, right? And so, we had started this collaboration where Stanford was going to work with us along with creating a mental health vision and the manner in which we wanted to work, not only with our students, but work with our staff. So, I think we had maybe two meetings at the most. I'm looking at Amy because my timeline's a little, might be a little off. But after the last meeting we had, we went into shutdown mode. And we continued to have meetings virtually. And then, we started to come back to in-person learning. And we started having these conversations, especially with Shashank, Dr. Yoshi, in regard to how much we wanted to have a counselor, a mental health clinician at each of our school sites. And with the help of all the money that we were getting from the feds and the state, we were able to accomplish that. And thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Liz, for really pushing forward and finding those people for us. And tonight's presentation is going to show the collaboration with Stanford and the Redwood City School District on where we are with this program right now, which I'm so excited about. I know we had a meeting a few weeks back and it was great to listen to what was taking place and where we are and where we're going to go. So, Michelle, I'm going to turn this portion, I bet, over to you or is it to Liz? Okay, it's to Liz, so Liz, you're on.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. And as always, you said everything I was just about to say. So, my part is now going to be very short, but I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm the one sharing the PowerPoint, right? This is not, or are you guys sharing it? Me? Okay. We're still learning how to do this.
Yep, you're with us.
Yay. Okay, so I have the great good fortune of, again, welcoming all of you to this presentation tonight. That has really been a labor of love over these past few years. And since I've been familiar with this now, it's just been amazing to see the work that the collaborative has brought to make sure that we have a framework that has been designed to meet the needs, the social, emotional, and the mental health needs of our students, which I think in many places, this is a signature practice that we have that is not available in other districts. And so, tonight, we're going to introduce our partners. And each one of them is going to speak a little bit about what they're bringing to this partnership and what the work looks like. We have partners from the John Gardner Center and from Stanford Medicine, Sequoia Union High School District, and they will all be introducing themselves. And of course, we have Michelle Griffith and Anna Paula Garay, who without the two of them, we would just still be beginning because they have put a tremendous amount of work into this. So, what we have here is some of the words from our mission and our vision and that particularly relate to the mental health of our students. You'll be hearing later tonight about some of our academic challenges and the work that we're doing and some of the thinking that we're doing to ensure that students are learning, reading, and math. But we know that they won't learn reading and math without good, positive mental health and good, strong support for their social, emotional growth as well. And that's what this program has been providing for students at every single school across our district. And I have to really call out the work that Michelle Griffith and Anna Paula Garay have done, again, with support from our Stanford partners, to develop a framework. Because this work began as, here's a person for each school. You know, now go ahead and get started and now ask for some help if you need some help. And together, they put together this amazing framework for every single student at every single school to ensure that they're getting hours of support that they need. And so, they're going to be talking about that tonight. Because without that framework, it would just be miscellaneous, random acts of kindness happening. But together with this framework and the work that they have provided, it's a system that has been designed to support our kids. So, I'm going to turn this over now to Dr. Yoshi.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Dr. Baker, and members of the RCSD Board. It's really a privilege for us to be here and it's a privilege for me. I'm Shashank Joshi and I've been involved with school mental health for over 20 years. And I am just delighted to speak on behalf of Vivek Murthy, who is our surgeon general, who, as many of you know, has been a very strong proponent of mental health. He shares the belief that mental health is part of overall health and our students have to be healthy enough to learn and our teachers have to be healthy enough to teach. So, with these funds from Stanford University in partnership with Redwood City School District and Sequoia Union, I just, I feel very proud to introduce this presentation tonight with this quote from Dr. Murthy, that mental health challenges are real and they are widespread, but most importantly, they are treatable and often preventable. Our obligation to act is not just medical, it's moral. Dr. Murthy believes that coming out of the pandemic, we have an unprecedented opportunity as a country, and I would say as a state in California, to rebuild in a way that refocuses our identity and common values, puts people first, and strengthens our connection to each other. If we seize this moment, step up for our children and their families in their moment of need and lead with inclusion, kindness, and respect, we can lay the foundation for a healthier, more resilient, and more fulfilled nation. Thank you, Dr. Murthy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Gerstein and I'm the Executive Director of the John W. Gardner Center for Youth and Their Communities at Stanford and a proud, longtime partner with the Redwood City School District and Redwood City community. I thank you very much for having us here tonight. Thank you to the board, thank you to Dr. Baker and to the amazing colleagues that you will hear from tonight, including Dr. Joshi. So, just, I have just a few comments tonight to kind of retrace those steps that Dr. Baker talked about, that we have over 20 years of partnership, the Gardner Center does for sure, in working on positive youth development and community schools. And, and over the years, the conversations have really been always driven by what are the urgent needs of the district? And what role can we all play together that would help best support your students? And so, to that, and what emerged from both districts those years ago was a focus on mental health, mental health for our young people, but also for the really important staff who are stressed in ways they've never been in our profession. Next. So, this collaborative is a three-year effort that is really about building capacity. And it's about building capacity to support mental health. And we just heard from Dr. Joshi about just how vital it is to have this focus. So, we're really thrilled to do that. And we have been working in close partnership with the district and with the Center for Youth Mental Health and Wellness in the School of Medicine and Psychiatry to really expand the support that the district has and also to build the capacity for inquiry, to engage in and inform continuous improvement efforts. So, we do this through the clinical expertise of our colleagues in the med school, system-level capacity-building support that is through ongoing conversation and research. And then, also, we're conducting research and you'll hear more about that shortly. And so, really, I just wanted to let you know that this, that you'll hear from just a few of us tonight, but there's really a large team of folks who have been working in close partnership with the districts. And tonight, we have listening in, our newest members of the team are graduate students who are eager and thoughtful and we're delighted to have them. But we also wanted to recognize that the Office of External Relations and the Office of Community Engagement at Stanford is supporting this effort. They are the ones that funded this for three years and we're just thrilled to be here. So, with that, I will pass this back to Liz.
Actually, don't panic, Liz, this is me. Hi, everyone. Good, no, thank you, Amy, so much. Hi, everyone, good evening. I hope you're all doing well. I came on board in about February with this amazing team. And in our first collaborative effort, we began speaking about what the immediate needs were for our families, our students, and our staff in regards to our return to in-person instruction and what that would mean and what that would mean for everyone. And so, Stanford jumped right in and their role through our entire partnership really has been to be our thought partners. They come in and they assess what is the need? How are things going? What do we need to do together? They provide us with our technical assistance. They're, they are consultants for us. And then, rolling up our sleeves together, we collaborate on what our next steps will be. Our first push out to our staff was in early August or August when we returned and we looked at what could be the possible possible issues that would come up around both mental health and around the physical concerns to return to in-person, in-person teaching. So, Dr. Yoshi and Dr. Lee Sanders presented a seminar to our staff, which was extremely well-attended. And they looked at what might arise in the opening of our doors with everyone. And they spoke to how, what strategies we could use in working with our students around mental health and our staff around mental health and what were the real physical concerns around the COVID situation. Then, we were also, as the district hired 12 mental health counselors for each site to have one full-time person. And so, we looked at not just bringing these positions to each site, but what would it take to create a true program? We have full-time staff that are district-employed and they're not only providing service, but to our students and our staff, but they're overseeing the mental health programs on our sites and working with our partners and the staff to create an aligned and a very meaningful program. We are also working together to expand and incorporate other district programs. We are working with our community schools and our MTSS site coordinators to truly align and complement our efforts in these areas and to determine qualitative and quantitative data that we can look at to see the effectiveness of all these programs. We have members from Stanford on our MTSS district leadership team and in particular, working with our SEL subgroup. And we also are getting, Anna Paula and I meet every other week with Dr. Yoshi and he's providing us consultation and support in this area as well. We are looking at building, as Liz illustrated at the beginning, with the bicycle that had all the parts, but then the bicycle that's all put together so that we are truly building a system that is working so that we can have sustainability and that we improve the outcomes for all that we need to do to make sure that the well-being of our students and our families and our staff is at the maximum level of effectiveness that we can have. And then, we are definitely together in this continuing learning process and improvement and that we are always looking and reflecting and gathering data and determining what could be our next steps that will lead us into our next, into levels of improvement. We can turn. Okay, so I get the honor right now to introduce to you a truly essential person in this work. And she has, she came to us in July. And Anna Paula Garay is our district's lead mental health counselor, who also serves both Roosevelt and our program clinicians for support and clinical expertise.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Michelle. So, I wanted to walk us through, some of these kind of milestones have been mentioned by different people already, but kind of summarizing it and making it a little bit more digestible in this fun graphic. So, kind of a little more specific to the mental health counseling program. So, if you think about last spring and summer, that's when the funding was secured for these positions. That's when the 12 mental health counselors were hired. The Stanford needs assessment was conducted to kind of figure out what next steps should be. Starting in August, when we, the school year started, we established my position as a mental health lead. We held the Stanford and RCSD Return to School webinar that I believe Liz mentioned. We implemented and kind of created the process for onboarding these new counselors. We placed them each, at one at each of our schools and we began having weekly mental health counseling team meetings. Kind of moving into September, we sourced and launched our electronic health system. So, now, the notes that we have for the students that we meet are in-house. So, if counselors leave down the line, we still have all those records that live within our own system. We developed district consent and release of information forums, conducted CPS and crisis trainings, health site cluster meetings, where we grouped a couple of schools at a time with their administrators, the counselors, and kind of walked through how the implementation and rollout of this new position was going to look like at each of the sites. And we began the Stanford Clinical Consultancies two to three times a month with Dr. Yoshi and Dr. Larson. And then, in October, we launched the MTSS working groups. There's a lot of subgroups in there. We have representatives from administrators, teachers, counselors, MTSS coordinators. It's a really diverse group. We began, I began meeting with each of the counselors, one-on-one, to kind of go through documentations, clinical concerns, just kind of consult on cases that might be a little more difficult. And we began planning the data and research consultancies with Stanford and that's with Dr. Kristin Geiser and her team. And then, moving into November, we added the Stanford Psych Fellow at Roosevelt, that is Dr. Larson, who works in conjunction with Dr. Yoshi. And we presented the fall update and reflection to Dr. Baker. So, just kind of some highlights of our mental health counseling program. So far, we've seen over 650 students, just the 12 mental health counselors. So, that's not inclusive of any of our partners, which is approximately 10% of the student population. This includes individual therapy, group therapy, check-in support, and crisis response. I'm personally super proud of our team, being a brand-new team off the grounds, having had this many contacts with students is pretty incredible. The team has also conducted over 340 SEL lessons in the classrooms, which has also been very useful and very helpful to a lot of our administrators and teachers who kind of needed more in-class, hands-on support. We have supported teachers and staff by doing presentations, classroom observations, informal coaching or consultancies. If a teacher's kind of wondering like, how do I help this kid regulate in my class? We're right there to help. We can help them implement the techniques we're suggesting live in the moment, which can be really helpful. And the ways that sites have benefited from having the mental health counselors on site. We participate in screen team meetings. We assist SSTs and kind of speak to parents. We participate in site subcommittees like the PBIS. Sometimes, we are leaders of the GSA groups on campus. And then, we also manage as important counselors employed by outside agencies. So, if we have Star Vista or One Life counselors at our sites, the district mental health counselor is kind of the point person to coordinate case loads, making sure the referrals are being assessed appropriately, leading crisis situations. So, we kind of have a mental health point person at every site. And I just wanted to share some pictures of what this program kind of looks like on the ground. So, these are some examples of counseling offices of both Roosevelt and Adelante Silby Lane. Some things that have been done around the schools. So, we have the Day of the Dead altar at Kennedy. This is in the family center where the students participated with the counselors and the community school coordinator and kind of as a team created this. In Orion, outside of several classrooms, I didn't have a chance to put all of the pictures of all of the kindness quilts. So, this is just an example of kindness quilts that the kids made and drew and posted outside of their classrooms. And then, Adelante, they held a grief group. And this is an example of artwork that was done in the grief group.
There it is, never mind.
Can we go back one more, Liz? Sorry, there was one more slide. There it is. At North Star, the counselor there is really familiar and enjoys the kimochi, social, emotional learning curriculum. So, she's kind of brought that to North Star. And then, this is an example of a group activity for students at Henry Ford, where they were asked to kind of share positive thoughts about themselves. So, kind of some reflections now that we are a couple, kind of halfway through the school year. So, some of the strengths of this mental health counseling team, really, the consistency of the counselor's presence is huge. So, historically, kind of working with partners, sometimes you would have a partner on site two or three days a week. So, if a student needed to check in with her counselor, they're in crisis, something's happening, their counselor's not there. And then, not only that, but year to year, not all of the counselors return through our partner agencies. So, if a student, you know, maybe has a difficult home life, kind of needs ongoing check-ins or something throughout the years, they could see, you know, maybe three or four counselors in the time that they're in a K5, K8 school, which is a lot of relationships that kind of have to start and rebuild. And so, kind of having one person there consistently every single day, year after year, makes a big impact with not just the students, but also the parents. The parents trust that that person's going to be there. They're more likely to open up. They're more likely to consent to services. They're more likely to consent to services. And also encourages a lot of relationship building with teachers. The more you see a counselor, the more that counselor consults with you, the more that you see that they're having a positive change on campus, the more teachers are likely to ask for help, consult, refer. So it's really a huge, huge benefit to have someone there every single day. The, the team is absolutely incredible. I can't say enough about how talented the mental health counselors are that we have. They're very skillful, very collaborative, supportive. It's a super cohesive team. We're really continuing to learn. It's a new program, so kind of implementing, we've hit some bumps and we just keep on rolling. So we're continuing to improve how we work across our sites. A benefit that I spoke about a little bit earlier as well is having oversight over all of the services being provided at our sites, instead of our partners kind of acting more independently, more coming and going as they please, not entirely sure who's on their caseloads. Our mental health counselors at each site really have a good account of who's being seen, when, by who, how often, what services has each student received? So we're really tracking all of that this year. So we're going to have some really fun data for Dr. Geiser and her team to play around with. And that kind of goes with the improved data practice and systems we're going to be able to have. The one kind of persistent question or challenge we still have is creating and sustaining this in-house mental health team really requires a significant amount of clinical and programmatic support. So not just kind of the structure, but also the clinical consultation piece. So if there's a crisis at Henry Ford, is there someone to help consult there if their counselor has a question? Kind of things that come up across the district. And now it is my absolute pleasure to hand this back off to Dr. Yoshi.
Thank you, Anna Paula. So as we are in year two, a really important piece of this for us has been the listening, the connecting, hearing from staff leaders. And we were able to do this by these bimonthly clinical meetings that we would have between our staff and folks in RCSD leadership in particular. Michelle, Anna Paula, Liz, and also Dr. Baker initially really helped us frame and understand what some of the challenges are, but also where the strengths are. There's a lot of strengths. There are a lot of experienced people in RCSD leadership and among the parent community and the staff community. Through these meetings and listening sessions, we understood that Roosevelt was a site that we could start with utilizing Stanford, Lucille Packard, Child and Adolescent Psychiatry Fellow, specifically working on school mental health. And that person is Dr. Gillian Larson. Dr. Larson meets with Anna Paula onsite there at Roosevelt and has been seeing individual students and working with staff and families, particularly those that are, I would say, requiring a tier-three intervention, an individual intervention, because the staff have put their heads together and tried to figure out where are the strengths with this child and family and where are the challenges? And so that's been very fruitful. It's been very interesting. As part of the MOU between Stanford and RCSD, we have this three hours per week of onsite support and additional hour of administrative support. And this has allowed Dr. Larson and I to really try and put together what hopefully is useful when it comes to individual students and families, while also consulting on, you know, what might the system need going forward? How might we build, for example, teacher versatility in being able to have these conversations with students that they might be concerned about? We really want to make sure that we are supporting staff and not only student mental health and well-being, but also staff mental health and well-being. And as, you know, again, as a reminder, Dr. Murti, who I had the privilege of meeting several years ago as part of some of the Obama initiatives in schools, he has always been a proponent of this idea that mental health is part of overall health. Our students have to be healthy enough to learn and our teachers healthy enough to teach. And this is part of our ongoing work and collaboration with the Gardner Center and RCSD. On the next slide, there are just some reflections about highlights from this past year, academic year 2022, starting in the fall. We've been very impressed with how the district has put together their MTSS district leadership team that attends to all aspects of the multi-tiered systems of support. So tier one, whole-school approaches, particularly around mental health promotion and well-being promotion. Tier two, being more targeted to particular groups of students who might be at risk for, say, trauma that, or they may have experienced trauma if they're from a newcomer community, or those who may have other challenges that might lend themselves to, say, group intervention. Again, so that they can get access to the curriculum, supporting their mental health in order to help build their brains and get access to the curriculum. And then tier three, which I mentioned before, the work that the mental health counselors are doing, Dr. Larson's doing in partnership with Anna Paula. And that these efforts go beyond crises. So building their capacity, building their versatility, building their language. We know that our sites are not community mental health centers, and yet they are charged with the community's mental health. Teachers are on the front line. They are spending, especially in elementary school, they are one of the main trusted adults for our students. So even though we're not turning them into therapists, we can help them make their conversations more therapeutic. If they're concerned about a student, what are some initial gatekeeper conversations and interventions they can put to use? And then how to help them know when to bump it over to a counselor, a mental health counselor? So we have been really impressed with how the program has developed, not only from startup mode, but also in development now over the last year or so. And again, just want to call out Michelle and Anna Paula and Liz for their leadership and partnership as we've tried to be good learners, good stewards. And it's been extraordinary for us to be able to learn with you all about not only the needs of some of the students, but also the strengths in the system. Just to reflect back on some of what Anna Paula mentioned, I think tier one strategies, social-emotional learning, while you're in the midst of a pandemic and as we emerge, hopefully, as we see the peak of Omicron in our rearview mirror, you and I understand that objects in our rearview mirror are closer than they appear. And, you know, we're only maybe a few months or another academic year away from our next kind of coronavirus variant. So how do we build in the infrastructure now on tier one, whole-school approaches on mental health and well-being? Again, so that our students can be healthy enough to learn? I think it's wonderful. And this district is really far ahead of many other demographically matched districts that we have worked with in Northern California in terms of having a district leadership team that discusses specific MTSS strategies and programs. When you have so many folks from the district involved, I think it's more than 40 that come together every month, it's, it's not as if Stanford has all the answers or any other institution or any journal paper has a list of recommendations. It's still about implementation. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Geiser in a moment. But they'll tell you that the best-laid program, the best database interventions are only as good as the buy-in from folks on the ground. So it's really important that we expand and strengthen tier one now while we have this partnership and that we really understand what tier one strategies have already been implemented and are working at different sites. And people are sharing examples that they have and experiences they have. And they're creating like a community of practice here around specific programs that they have found to be helpful. Where we can come in from the Center for Youth, Mental Health and Well-being, from the Gardner Center, is we might have some experience with some specific programs that could be adapted for specific sites based on what the sites might need. Lastly, I'll say that what I've experienced in other districts, both in California and nationally, is that you've got to have the appropriate FTE, the appropriate oversight of programs that have mental health counselors at different schools. So it's often the case that amazing leaders like Anna Paula, who are maybe charged with oversight, also get pulled in to specific sites because they have the clinical expertise. Well, then, then you're at risk of not being able to have someone oversee everything. So I think you need leadership, both on the ground in terms of clinical expertise, but you also need sustained support for the person who oversees the entire program and coordinates the entire program across the sites. Let's see, I think that is the end of my portion. I'd like to now turn it over to my dear friend, Dr. Kristin Geiser, who is the Deputy Director of the Gardner Center for Youth and Their Communities. Kristin.
Thank you, Shashank. And thanks again to all for allowing us, inviting us to be with you tonight. So to offer a few highlights of the Gardner Center's role over the last year, I think I just want to also offer just an overarching comment on how we've been able to do. What you see on this slide here is by being invited into the real day-to-day work or day and night work sometimes of the district. And so we have been warmly invited into actual leadership meetings and impromptu planning meetings and community school proposal writing sessions so that we can just work literally side-by-side, either on Zoom or once we did it at a table, which was really a delight to meet in person and masked many months ago. But to just be invited into the authentic work, so we have not had to create work or create meetings. We have come alongside and built everything over the last year from those moments. And I'm grateful to Liz, Michelle, Anna Paula for doing that so graciously and courageously. It takes courage and patience to invite someone into your space like that. So thank you. Few of the highlights are, again, attending to sort of this question of how in this moment or in this meeting or in this team do we have an opportunity to move even a little further toward a system? And so that's, that's the question always. And so we're listening and attending to that together. And one key piece of advancing and creating a system is developing and cultivating shared language, shared conversation, shared thoughtful engagement around complicated topics. And so we are looking always for ways to elevate that and advance that and, and honor the work of the district. And so we've done that through some writing. And some of that is community-facing, where pieces could be disseminated and shared. And some of it's more practitioner-facing to help offer a new frame or a gentle reframe on things to invite conversation. So we're always looking for ways to do that, and we have a few more in the pipeline. It's been mentioned a couple of times that we're being mindful of opportunities to strengthen data systems and practices. So again, we don't want to create a separate data system around student mental health and well-being. We want to look for ways to build on what you already have in place. Weave this in. We want it to be meaningful. We want it to be doable is a big one. So we're always looking for what's the one step we could take here? And then we can do another one in a couple of months. But how can we continue to be taking steps toward a meaningful system of data collection and analysis? And then, as Amy mentioned earlier, we actually are on top of all that, are also conducting some original research. So last spring, we conducted needs assessment to try and identify the priority areas for our work to begin together. And you have a link to that. And data collection is currently underway. We're in the middle of a study of the mental health counseling roles. What are they doing? How is that going? What conditions seem to help and hinder their work? And that will be used to inform practice going forward. And it will also be used to help us understand what then would be appropriate measures of effectiveness. So once we understand the work a bit more, we can then look at outcomes. And so we're teeing ourselves up to do that. And so a highlight, I'll just reiterate, is somehow in the middle of a pandemic, the district has been able to hold the mental health conversation in the context of a broader conversation around creating systems of integrated support. So mental health is not a side project. And I've been in districts where it is. And that, that can be an okay starting place, but it's always tricky to fold it in and really integrate it. And I think a highlight in all of this for our team is just how integrated the district is approaching this. Questions, we continue to tend. Our questions around how do we cultivate shared understanding? Our attention is, in many places, there are many interested, impacted and invested partners and parties in questions around mental health. We have different languages, different vocabularies around the work and different sort of hot buttons in it. And so how do we find ways to really continue to deepen and enrich that discussion? And we, we are mindful of that. And the other is what I'm calling increasing data value and decreasing data burden. There are a lot of requests placed upon the school district to produce data to outside agencies and partners. And that can be burdensome. So we're always trying to look for how do we find that balance of what is, where is that sweet spot of the effort to the meaningfulness of that work? So we'll continue to tend to those. I don't think we'll solve them, but they are, they're good food for us to continue attending to. And with that, I think I hand it back to Michelle.
Thank you. So when I hear all of this, I'm amazed that it's been, not even been a year since we've been together and we've worked side-by-side. But we do already have in place next steps that we want to take together. And for sure, the sustain, statement of the rollout of the MTSS district leadership team. We are working, Stanford is working with us as being members of this team, but also being consultants and advisors to the work that we are doing in all three of our subgroups. We are continuing to strengthen the role of our mental health counselors. Even, even though they came with extraordinary backgrounds and lots of expertise, we are still working to provide them with research-based practices and information and guidance. And they are also branching out among themselves to gain knowledge and share their knowledge with one another in their weekly meetings around topics that they have continued in, continued training in. We are, we continue to work to build understanding and engagement of interested, impacted and invested parties, which include our board, include district and site leadership, include our staffs, our students and our families so that we are sharing our, our work with everyone to bring clarity and to, to what this looks like. What does mental health look like in our schools? How can we support everyone and make it truly meaningful? We are looking to build a cohesive system of support. We've had partners for many, many years that have come into our school and provided these services to our students. And we are really working so that that system is aligned and is complementing one another. And so our mental health counselors have really taken a lead in the work to organize and support our, our partners as well. Also, we are conducting a study of this work. And we are looking at, we are doing observations. We are interviewing. We are collecting data, all to use to inform what next steps we will be taking. And we really want to build a system that is sustainable and continues to improve over time. One of the pieces that has come out through our work this year with, with discussions with staff, I've been meeting with our, each of our site administration and our mental health counselors. And Anna Paula meets as a group with them, but also individually, is we are hearing the interest for us as a district to look into tier one SEL support. to look into tier-one SEL support for all of our sites. It's kind of building those strong shoulders for all of our students to stand on as we, as we move through this work. And we're also looking at improving our data systems. We are in the process of gathering data. We've already gathered through the years data around as social emotional well-being of our students and their connection to school and staff through our panorama surveys. But we really want to look at some additional data points to, that can delve deeper into what we're implementing and to inform our next steps for the future.
Back to you, Kristin.
We just wanted to be sure and put this in the board materials so you could see the questions that are guiding our study right now. The mental health counseling program is, is sort of something to look forward to, we hope, for what you can look forward to hearing from us in a few months with some, some learnings on these things. Back to you, Michelle.
Thank you. So we, we really want to thank our board and Dr. Baker for this commitment into, for what I've always believed and all that are working on this believe that this is truly a, an investment that is well worth making for our, for our families, for our entire community, for our students. And we've already heard so much positive feedback, but I wanted to highlight a few comments that have come from our site administrators. And just wanted to leave you with this, with these quotes and with, from the bottom of our heart, truly thank you for, for allowing this team to work together to, to do this work. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any comments from the board or questions? Cecilia?
I'll go first. Um, thank you, everyone, for the presentation, for your efforts. Michelle, you just thanked the board, but honestly, you guys are the ones doing all the work along with Stanford. I do want to say thanks to Redwood City for, again, being the welcoming partner and for the John Gardner Center to be that partnership, the collaborative efforts. Again, it takes a village. So, you know, I just can't thank you guys enough. Obviously, we're doing this for the well-being of our students. So again, thanks, everyone, for all your hard work. Anyone else?
I agree with Cecilia. Thank you for the work that everyone is doing. You know, and I really appreciated the quote that Dr. Joshi included from Dr. Murthy about the medical community's moral imperative to address mental health and mental wellness. And it, it pairs really well with the education educators' moral imperative to, you know, close educational gaps, particularly for students that haven't been served well in the system since the, probably the inception of schooling. And so seeing those come together and focus at a place, you know, in the school is, is great. And I particularly, as I was telling Dr. Baker earlier today, I'm really glad that this agenda item is presented tonight because we're also going to be looking at our academic outcomes later on in the meeting. And, you know, Dr. Joshi said, had another comment about objects in your rearview mirror are closer than they appear. And the first thing I thought of was, oh, maybe that means like, oh, it's so easy sometimes to forget what we just went through when you're faced with, holy cow, there's, you know, maybe they're not making the progress that they need to. And maybe they're, you know, maybe students aren't at the, you know, the academic outcome that we want and that we turn and focus just on that. And it's just such a lost opportunity without addressing the, the mental wellness, you know, of the students. Like, the education is just not going to happen. And it's also true for the teachers. The teacher's mental health, if they're not in the game, they're not going to challenge the systems that have been around for, you know, since schooling started and really be able to say, how are we going to make this difference? So I, I'm really glad that this is here. And if, you know, if, if you wanted to know if the board member supported, I totally support it. So I'm, yeah, thanks for the appreciation. Oh, I also want to say, building capacity, because I am, I don't look forward to the day that our, our additional one-time funding stops. And I know that much of our mental health funding is coming from that today. And so I really do want to acknowledge just how important it is to, at the building capacity and how much, how much that's focused on it. I think that's really important. And we'll, we'll pay dividends over, you know, the years to come. So thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'll go next. Um, so thank you so much for the presentation and for everyone for being here. It's been really exciting to have this program in place. And, you know, just thank you, Dr. Baker, again, for wanting to invest in these mental health counselors. I was fully supportive of that from the beginning and honestly, truly doubted whether or not we would be able to hire 12 mental health counselors for our schools. So, you know, kudos to Dr. Baker for getting out there and Wendy for your work too, to get, to get these quality mental health counselors on our campuses. And, you know, we don't, we don't get to schedule our crises and have them when it's convenient for us. So I think it's just huge to have full-time people on our campuses for our students and our staff when the crisis does occur because it's not on the calendar. Um, I want to echo what Mike said. I think it's really important that we continue to sustain this program. You know, I'm, I'm acutely aware of the funding that will run out from the state and the feds. And I think while we've been able to put this program in place, it would be a waste of all of our time and money if we aren't able to sustain this going forward. So that is a huge priority for me. Again, thank you to everybody, Michelle, Liz, Anna Paula, for all of your work with Stanford and the Gardner Center. And just, I can't remember who said it. I think it was Dr. Geiser for being welcomed into our district. I applaud the district for being kind of the lead in this area, for setting a good example and something that other districts in our state are able to follow. So that's all I have.
Well, I am so inspired tonight. This was such a great overview and update, and I really appreciate it. You know, Lucy Wicks, I think, contacted a few of us. It was probably at least three years ago now. And I remember when we had those first meetings, we had a whole list of things that we asked Stanford to help us with. And it was interesting how we pretty quickly got to mental health in conversations with the Sequoia High School District and Stanford and us as being a high priority. And I'm really glad that that's what we landed on. It's pretty clear that the experts we heard from tonight from Stanford, you've just been so valuable to us as we've been really, you know, deepening the program that we've always had. But it's been, as I think, Michelle, you said, more piecemeal. Or maybe Liz, you did, I'm not sure who'd said that. But, you know, we sort of knew that we were sort of putting it together in a lot of different ways. And I do feel like in the last year, we've really, you know, created more of a framework with the MTSS and really thinking about the tiers. And, you know, I think as a community, we've just gone through, you know, since March of 2020, the most traumatic community event that one could think of, right? That we've all collectively gone through. And so.
Is that me?
Okay, sorry, I was getting, we're getting a little feedback here in the boardroom. So collectively, like, we're all in tier one, some level of trauma, right? Normally, tier one, people would be humming along a little bit better. But tier one is, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on. And so I think everybody needs the support and really the thoughtfulness that a mental health framework can bring to all of us. I was really glad to see that in addition to the individual sessions that you're having with students that are maybe in tier two or tier three that have some of the higher needs, that you're really thinking about the professional development, the SEL lessons in the classrooms, you know, working with our teachers. And I'm glad that you mentioned that. I mean, our teachers and the staff at school sites, whether it's our bus drivers or the, you know, the kitchen staff or the office managers, the instructional assistants, they're on the front lines with kids all the time. And really, you know, you're right, we've become community health centers. And actually, that's physical health with COVID. We've gotten right in there this year and last year with testing and vaccinations and everything else. And then with mental health, I mean, we really are the hub for the community. So thank you for being on this journey with us, Stanford. We really appreciate having you. Dr. Baker and Mike Wells and I were talking today, and we were just so grateful that you're our neighbor and that you're willing to work with us. I mean, you're a world-renowned, you know, international high point in the world. So we're lucky to have you on our side. So thank you for doing that. And just thank you to the staff, really, who's all worked on this. From the teachers to, you know, Michelle and to Liz and just everybody else. So thank you so much.
Well, I would echo my colleagues' comments. And I especially want to thank Amy from the John Gardner Center for always being there and for helping us to work with our students and to build better systems and provide a better education for our students. It is true that we had counselors here and there, but I'm really excited about having it all be one cohesive system. To me, mental health is a must for our students. I've, when I was part of Redwood City 2020, which is Redwood City Together now, I was always advocating for that, starting at a very early age. Mental health is one of those things that, you know, when you think about it, is those invisible injuries that you cannot see, that impact every student that comes through, whether it's one day or another, we all have bad days. And I'm really excited to see that they're working with the teachers because the teacher can have a really big impact on that student and their well-being and their progress in education. As Mike was saying, yes, we would like them to achieve academically, but it's also really important to make sure that they are healthy mentally and physically. And then, when they're there, they can move forward academically. And I think this program is really helping with that. I think it couldn't have come at a better time, actually, because with all the trauma that everyone has been feeling during this past few years, it is really timely. And I, I do want to thank Michelle and all the staff, Liz. I know you've got tons of reports to write, but I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing to make sure that this is sustainable and it keeps moving forward. And I also would really applaud Dr. Baker because he has been a champion of this. He puts it out there as a priority. And not all superintendents will do that. I just really feel that he understands our community, he understands our students, and he values the partnerships that Stanford and other groups bring. And it's really, you know, sharing the data is not something that everyone is willing to do, as we all know. And I think that this collaboration has just really been really impressive. And I was actually thinking, when this is all done, it would be not only a great book, but I was thinking it would be a great presentation at the School Boards Association, not only in California, but nationally, because I think it really, it's just such a wonderful program that sustains the students and the whole system. So with that, thank you very much, and I hope to hear more from you soon.
Yes, great presentation. This is more than I ever imagined. When I came to you and I said, you know, these are one-time dollars, worked with Priscilla to spread it over several years, and that I wanted a counselor at each school set, a mental health specialist. I never envisioned it would be where it is right now, and it's such a short amount of time. Shashank, thank you from the bottom of my heart for really assisting us in making this move forward. Amy, for your constant guidance. Kristin, for your availability, you know, and coming to MTSS meetings. And I don't think there is another district that has a Stanford, Stanford members on their MTSS committees. It shows the collaboration, the strength and the belief you have of a partnership and how well it can work. Anna Paula, we, we knew about Anna Paula through Michelle. And so we knew we had to get, have Anna Paula. And with Michelle and Liz at the forefront and making sure that we continue on this pathway, mental health will totally thrive in this district of being at the forefront, not only for our students but for our staff. We just need to make sure, and I'm so glad that, to hear board members say, we need to sustain this. So we do, we need to sustain, sustain it in manners of how we look at our budgets in the future, looking at our wonderful other partners that do have some dollars, that they can loosen up their purse strings. But I, we, we need to do this, not only for our kids and our staff, but for our community. It's, it's, it's something that's deserving. In the short period of time, I just can't believe where we are. And it's all due to the collaboration we have with Stanford. I thank you. I thank you all and the staff that we have put together. They're amazing. They are definitely amazing. So thank you all. I'm so thrilled, Amy, that we're still working together after that very first grant that you helped me get through your foundation when I was still in the classroom. That's quite a while ago. But Shashank, thank you. Kristin, thank you. Anna Paula, Michelle, Liz, we're making it work. We just got, we gotta keep going, gotta keep going. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Great.
Thank you very much. That was a wonderful report, uplifting, definitely uplifting. Now, moving right along, can I have a motion to approve bond consent items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
And we have one action item for the bond as well. It's 11.1, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 23. Do we have any comments or questions on that? No? Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, now to the consent items. Can I have a motion? Oh, bye, Will. Can I have a motion to move the consent items, the regular ones? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And on to action items. 13.1, it's recommendation regarding selection of revised trustee area maps and adoption of Resolution 24. There's a presentation, right?
Yes, there is. And I know this evening, we would normally have Josh Chisholm with us, but he was unavailable due to circumstances that came up earlier. But we do have in his place, I believe, Jason Martinez, who is very well-versed on what has been taking place in the Redwood City School District. And we also have William Tunick with us. And remember, this evening is, you're going to take one of the maps and you're going to adopt one of those. And that will in turn be sent to our county elections department and to our county office of education. And I think, is it go supervisors or not? No, those two, and, and we'll move over from there. So at this time, I think I'm going to turn it over, I guess, to Jason, correct? William, or William, are you going to start?
No, I, I think I'll, I'll let Jason handle it.
Okay. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you very much, and hello, everyone. And I want to start by saying, if this presentation looks familiar, well, it should, because it's the exact same presentation you've already seen. So I'm going to keep it relatively short and sweet and just briefly go over the presentation again for those that may be tuning in. the presentation again, for those that may be tuning in. With respect to the first page on the slide, and just to kind of for some housekeeping matters, I don't have control of the actual presentation. Are we going to display it or? If the board would like, I can try to do a share screen. I just wasn't sure logistically how we were going to administer the presentation.
Ali is trying to see if she can share her screen, so hold on one second. Here we go. All right, we've got it going, Jason.
Perfect. All right, thank you, everyone. If we could go to the very slide number one. So this is, again, just sort of outlining what the board has done to date with respect to this process, and we are at essentially the stage where the board has an opportunity to select the scenario of its choosing. So if we can move to the next slide, this is just a slide indicating or sort of portraying what the current trustee areas look like in the in the district. And again, it's delineated by colors to represent each trustee area. The black bold line around the whole district is effectively intended to sort of show that this is the district. And again, within the district are the various trustee areas delineated by color code. Next slide, please. So this is conceptual trustee area number one, and the board, again, has had an opportunity to see this. No changes. And if you go to the next slide here, we have a slide that kind of zooms in into this particular scenario. And there's been no changes to this scenario. So matter of fact, if you go to the next slide, we sort of outline that, again, there's been no changes here. The only sort of change, if you will, or addition, I should say, would just be adding the schools onto the, onto the actual conceptual area. So you can see where they're located within each actual trustee area. So if we can move to the next slide, please. This slide is just some demographic information as it pertains to this particular scenario. I think a couple of things I just want to note. At the very top of the, of the slide here, you'll see the total population of the district. And then that ideal size is just reflective of, if we have the total population of the district, and we're essentially dividing it by five trustee areas, this would be the ideal size for each trustee area, which is just over 20,200. And if you look on the far right-hand corner, that's just representative of the variance. So the variance here is reflective of the largest trustee area in comparison to the smallest trustee area by population size. Just a couple of things I'll quickly note here as it pertains to this particular scenario. When we're looking at, by way of example, our Hispanic and Latino population within the district's sort of boundaries, we have in trustee area five, based on total population, 70%. So we have a majority there. When we look over, and I'm sort of going from right to left, if you guys want to follow along. If we move over to trustee area four, we see not necessarily a majority, but a plurality as it pertains to the Hispanic and Latino population. So I just wanted to note those two statistics there as it pertains to scenario one. We go to the next slide, please. This is conceptual trustee area number 2A. And the reason why we're calling it 2A is because the first presentation of scenario two, we made some minor changes, which we highlighted in a couple of slides soon to come. But in any event, here is a sort of broad overview of what 2A looks like. And then the next slide here is just really zooming in. And if you see that sort of circle, the red circle there, that's to to help distinguish some of the changes from the initial two scenario to what this is, the 2A scenario. And as we go to that next slide here, so in essence, what we're seeing here is that the only changes that we've seen between or that have been made from the previous scenario is that trustees' areas one, four, and five remain unchanged. The school points, just like all the other scenarios, were added so that the actual schools placed throughout the district's boundaries to reflect where they lie in each trustee area. And then the community around Alameda de Las Olgas, and I apologize if I brutally mispronounced that, but was transferred from trustee area three or transfer to, I should say, trustee area three from trustee area one, or two, I should say. So when that slide with the red circle that we had previously is just sort of indicating or highlighting how we saw that transfer and that change. And here's some of the sort of demographic data as it pertains to scenario 2A. And again, I just want to highlight at the top right-hand corner, we see a 9.1 variance. And if we turn our attention to the Hispanic Latino population and sort of how that, how they're represented in each trustee area here, starting from trustee area five and working our way, we see a majority as far as total population of 67%. As we move over to trustee area four, we have not a majority, but we have a plurality there, plurality, excuse me, there for trustee area four. And then again, in trustee area two, as it pertains to total population, so just short of a, of a majority at 49.7%. And this is conceptual scenario 3A. And again, just to note, it's 3A only because it's intended to sort of reflect, and we'll see that on the next slide, the changes from the original scenario three and the changes that were made for this particular revamp, if you will. So if we go to the next slide, and we sort of circle there what some of those differences are. And, you know, the next slide will point that out, but I'll kind of, while we have it up, just talk about it a little bit. Again, the schools were added. The El Camino Road was used to draw the boundary between trustee area one and four, and kind of circled that there. And then a small portion of the area north of Hudson Street, which is also circled below, was reassigned from trustee area two to trustee area one. And that in large part was just to balance out the population and just to provide a little extra context is that, that's what we're doing. We're effectively balancing populations and we're working within sort of the the constraints, if you will, and I'm not sure if that's the appropriate word, but the confines of ensuring that we stay below the 10% variance that we're capped out at when drawing these scenarios. So again, trying to balance that population under that, under that constraint. And again, this is just sort of highlighting what I discussed, the distinctions in scenario 3A from three. And then I'll just briefly go into, again, some of the data here at the top right-hand corner, a 4.9% variance from the from the largest trustee area to the smallest. And then when we're looking at the Hispanic Latino population within the district's boundaries, and we're looking at trustee area five and working our way forward, we have a majority in trustee area five, plurality again in trustee area four, and those, so those are the two I particularly wanted to know. We go to the next slide. This is just to try to, you know, conceptualize if you were, give you guys a better idea so you can kind of see these as next to one another from your current map and to the extent that you can. And I know it's kind of difficult when you're looking at it like this, but to see some of the distinctions between the three scenarios. And with that, I will open it up for any questions, or for that matter, perhaps defer to district council, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Not necessarily. I think that pretty much covered, I guess, just from a, from a process standpoint. As Jason Superintendent mentioned, this is sort of the end of the process. So the board has before tonight a resolution kind of reciting the process the board went through. And ultimately, what we're looking for, it would be a motion from the board to approve the resolution with one of the three scenarios identified to be attached to the resolution that will effectuate essentially the adoption of the map. And then as the Superintendent mentioned, we'll notify the county office and the county register of the new map. That'll, that'll complete the process.
Do we have any questions or comments? Clarifications?
A question. Between scenario 2A and 3A, what is really the difference? Is it just what we circled between area two and area four?
What may be helpful, and to whatever extent it is, is possibly, I think, the last slide on the presentation where it shows all three, because it gets a little difficult trying to shovel between each slide. Maybe that way we can kind of draw some of the distinctions, or at least highlight some of them, but if that would help the board in being able to sort of conceptualize these distinctions. Perfect, thank you. So one thing that just pops right out that I would draw your distinction to, if you, if you look at, for instance, in comparing 2A to 3A, and if I remember, that was sort of what you wanted to discuss or that you were inquiring about, you can see by way of example with trustee area two. And when you see how it sort of dips below, and unfortunately, I'm having a hard time and my eyesight's not too good in trying to draw any particular distinction to a roadway or anything to that effect, but just looking at it purely from a color perspective as well, you can see some of the delineations. What I will try to do is, to the extent that I can, is to try to provide some areas where you might be able to notate from a major street roadway or whatever it may be. But hopefully, this might start and help a little bit in trying to draw those distinctions.
Before you do that, can I just make one comment on the difference that I see between these two? And I know that I brought this up in a previous meeting. In scenario 3A, trustee area four has a little triangle that is actually in the Five Points area, and it's kind of Redwood Avenue, a neighborhood of mostly apartments and duplexes. But it's completely detached from the rest of trustee area four, and it's divided by, you know, Woodside Road, El Camino, and not even part of the trustee area four neighborhood at all. So that's actually the major sticking point for me. And I'll just put that out there. I do not like scenario 3A because of that little triangle area. It looks very gerrymandered to me.
Yeah, I think what we talked about at the last meeting was that scenario 2A has the look and feel that, you know, feels less gerrymandered. It feels like communities are kind of kept together and all of that. It has a higher variance, but the variance still meets the legal parameters. It also does have, you know, has the one district that's clearly majority Hispanic Latino, and it also has another district, actually, two districts that are pretty close, has the plurality, I think, which is good. When you think about diversity. Let's see if you go to two. Sorry, I have to move back. Yeah, if you look at, actually, Wendy, if you show 11, page 11. And actually, one thing I'll just say upfront is I actually, I don't have a strong preference other than, I think, what the statement you just made, Janet. So I think it's, for me, it's between scenario one and 2A, just because that 3A does have a very weird little outcrop. But, but with my comments, I don't actually have a strong preference. I'm just sort of pointing out some things that we might want to think about. So if you look at this one, this is the 2A, the one that kind of the map looks the best when you look at the map. And if you start to look at the numbers with it, we can see that trustee area five has a majority Hispanic Latino. And then trust area two, almost, I mean, it's 49.7%, which is pretty high. And I know that's something that this whole law was meant to help with, right, to ensure that communities are together and we look at demographics, that sort of thing. So the numbers, other than the variance being higher than the others, you know, look okay. So I'd be interested in any other, it's just sort of aha or comments that people have. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I lean towards the 2A scenario as well, because of the compactness of the area boundaries that are drawn. You know, I think the guidance, I don't, I think the guidance we've been going off of was not that there was a legal definition of what the variance could be, but that it was just sort of a legal sense of like, under 10%. And it really is just between the trustee area two and three, where all the variance in that scenario comes from. And some of this ends up being just a lot of relatively small numbers. You know, we're not 100,000 people is not, not in a small number of people, but it's also something where just 100, 100 or so people in one direction or another is going to make for a larger variance. And so that's why I'd, I'd be comfortable recommending 2A. And I think that's probably of the three scenarios, the best one for us to go for.
Yeah, and I would agree. I, you know, as Lisa mentioned, I just like that it looks cleaner. It doesn't look like you're gerrymandering. As Janet mentioned, I don't really like that, that little triangle there being, it just looks strange, and I don't think that it keeps the communities together. With the higher variance, I'm comfortable, as long as it's within the law and the limits. I just think that scenario 2A seems to be the, the better one, in my opinion.
And again, same for me. I unfortunately was not present at the last board meeting, and so that little triangle was, was the stickler for me. So again, with that said, I'm also fine with scenario two.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to?
So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution with map 2A to be attached.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Will and?
William and Jason, thank you so much.
Jason and William.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
See, 13.2 is the recommendation of approval of management consultant agreement between the Redwood City School District and Terry Barnes, Walter Board Weiss Health, Lester. Does anyone have questions or comments on this item? None?
Any questions or comments regarding moving forward with this? Okay, perfect. Then we will start moving forward, and that will mean that, that we will have Joy and her group, TBW, and also we'll have Godbe and his group. They will start a polling with our community. And she was hoping that we would get information back maybe by the end of February. You know, that, maybe that, I don't know if it'll meet that, we may have, depending on when they finish, we may have to have a special meeting, because I don't think she's going to have it done for that. I think the last meeting we have in February is like the 16th, if I recall correctly, or the, is it the, is it the 16th? Because of next week is that President's Week. So she was not sure. It, I'll talk to her more about it, but she just was thinking, because we were not here that following week. Because that's what she thought. We had another board meeting that week. And I said, no, because there's President's Week. So I was wondering possibly if I could hold maybe a special meeting on the 28th, if she needs it. That's a Monday. But if she needs it, because the turnaround time is quick with this. But once she has the information that this has gone forward, I'll communicate with her tomorrow and see what she says. But if you could just kind of have those on your calendars, possibly the 28th, and I'll make it like at 6:15.
Are you talking the 28th of February?
Yes.
We have a super advisory coming that night. The superintendent advisory.
I may have to move that. This would have to go before, because we're on a tight timeline. But I'll check with her. Let me check and see what she, what she says. You know, the superintendent's advisory committee, is that what you said? Let me see what she says and then we may have to, I may have to move something. Okay, but if you could hold the twenty eighth for that, I know that a couple of you already have that on your calendars. It would just be the other three.
So Maria, would you like a motion on the agenda item? I don't think we actually voted. So I'll make a motion to approve thirteen point two contract.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Moving right along, thirteen point three, recommendation regarding public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement and approval of tenanted agreement between the California School Employees Association, Chapter Five, and Redwood City School District.
Thank you. I'm pleased to bring to you tonight the final tentative agreement that has been ratified for CSCA for the twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two school year. Over the last several months, CSCA and the district has, have met and discussed multiple articles as outlined. Article one, five, six, seven, eight, nine, fifteen and sixteen have come to agreement on changes, including compensation. And this is a successor agreement, which is why there are so many multiple articles open. But I'm pleased to bring this to you at night for approval. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
I just want to say how excited I am that we're able to give the CSCA their raises. I know we've been working towards this for the last couple of years through a lot of collective bargaining. We've been wanting to complete this MOU, so I'm just so, or this contract, I'm just so excited that we're able to do that. Our classified staff really deserve the raises that our teachers and management have gotten. So thank you and thank you, CSCA. I think it looks really, really good. So no questions, but I just wanted to thank everybody involved. And I know we're all really, really happy to see them get the raise. So thank you.
Anyone else? No? Well, I will echo your comments. I really think it's about time they got their raise. Thank you, Wendy, and thank you to the team for working on this. I think that they deserve it and I'm just really happy to see that they're finally going to get it. And with that, can I have a motion to move this item?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thirteen point four, recommendation regarding approval of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two certificated and classified seniority report.
Thank you. I emailed the board these reports electronically. But over the course of the last two months, all of the employees that are listed on the seniority ports have been consulted for their proper placement and to ensure that their input is given. If there's an error or a change, for example, in addition of a master's or additional credential and so forth. So I want to thank Erin Kekos, our director of HR, who spent a lot of time and energy in her outreach to employees. So tonight I'm bringing this to you for an approval for the seniority reports as, as outlined.
Do we have any comments or questions on this item?
The only comment I want to make is that I love looking through these. I know that you guys do all the technical work and make sure everything's, you know, perfected and all of that. But just knowing a lot of our staff, you know, we've known them for a lot of years. We have some amazing individuals that have worked with us ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. And I just want to say thank you to all the staff who are represented in these reports because really the heart and soul of Redwood City is all of our staff. So thank you.
Any others? No? Can I have a motion to move this item? So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thirteen point five, recommendation regarding variable term waiver request.
Thank you. So the, the CTC that oversees credentialing for teachers and substitutes and so forth has had a longstanding process in place for a variable term waiver, which allows teachers to have a waiver for the C best test, which is a test that needs to be passed to be a teacher, but also to be a substitute. So essentially buys time for that test to be completed. And especially recently during COVID, it's been a little bit more difficult to get, to sit for these tests during these conditions. So many districts have utilized the C best waiver to allow competent people to be in the classroom, but to buy them more time to finalize these last steps. And so in this particular case, on this board memo, I'm advocating for one of our contracted employees to continue forth with a variable term waiver. It's a customary practice, but a contracted employee was hired just recently, which is why it's coming to you at this time.
Any comments or questions? Can I have a motion then to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Excellent. Okay, on to fourteen point one, reports from board members and superintendent. And we're going to start with Mike.
I have nothing to report.
Janet?
Let's see, Alisa and Wendy and I met for the policy committee twice since our last board meeting. And we got some good work done. And then this morning, we had a Redwood City Together meeting.
Cecilia? And last night, Maria and I met with the Child Nutrition Committee. So we did have actually a long agenda. We did welcome one of our parents, Jessica Shade, and we went over enrollment. I don't have the agenda for me, but another actual, Priscilla went over. We heard from Anna Legu and Patricia Correa. And we talked about equipment needs, the fact that in order for us to become, oh my God, I can't think of the word. When you cook in the kitchens, now all the kitchens are equipped for that. And so again, we had a long, but good conversation about child nutrition.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, so I followed Janet around virtually. Went to the policy committee meetings and the Redwood City Together. And actually, Redwood City Together, we, we got a really good summary of everything that's been going on the last year. So, you know, we'll forward that to the other three board members. I think that would be useful for you just to kind of quickly skim, you know, read through it. There's a lot going on with that. And actually, our staff are a big part of that. I know Dr. Baker's in a lot of meetings with them and Michelle Griffith is joining us as well as others. Let's see, I did want to just report back on the safe routes to schools. I mentioned this last meeting that we had a meeting and then there's been some follow up. And I did follow up with Michelle Griffith and I just wanted to report back to you because I think it's important for all of us to know that the district is participating, as of course, Dr. Baker knows, we are participating with the SAM Trans Pilot. So the great news is there are monthly passes that have been delivered to all the school sites. Thank you, Michelle and others who have done that. And different school sites are getting them out in different ways. They made those decisions locally, but you know, there's thousands of monthly passes going out to our free and reduced lunch students, migrant ed students, homeless and foster youth. And we'll be reporting back as the pilot goes on for the next six months. And so these passes can be used to get around back and forth to school, to get around in the community. So I think it's a really amazing opportunity for our kids and families. And hopefully, you know, if the pilot goes well, we'll see it moving forward. So thank you, Dr. Baker and staff for working on, because I know it's, you know, it's extra work for us to get all those passes out and keep track and all of that. But I do think it, once, you know, it kind of goes back to what we talked, we started the meeting with, right? Is the things that are good for our families and students, we want to be able to do. And I think, I think that's about it. Thanks.
So I also attended the Child Nutrition Committee and it was the longest one we've had yet. Thank you to the staff for putting together all of the data and information that the parents had requested. We did talk about grants and one of my recommendations is that that be moved to the Wellness Committee because I think it just seemed to be more appropriate there. The other thing is that, as Cecilia mentioned, the kitchens are not designed or equipped for scratch cooking. So that may be something that if we go forward with a new facilities plan, that that should be included in that as well. And then I had to leave the meeting, so I think she summarized it pretty well. But again, our staff have done a tremendous job given the situation and providing the parents answering their questions and trying to get them to understand that we can't just go and contract with Revolution Foods, for example, because we have staffing. We can't just do some of the things that they want, but we are going to do the cereal program, which we had done in the past, by the way. And then I met with the Chair of the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission. And they are interested in what's happening in our elementary schools, although also in high school, but especially in the elementary schools and mental health. So I briefly talked about what we're doing and then refer them to others like Alisa and Dennis that can also help them. John?
No, I think everything's been covered. We all see each other at some of these committee meetings. The only item that I just wanted to make you all aware of is that I want to thank Dr. Shama, Lainey Hu, and also Wendy and some of her staff that have put together the testing, COVID testing alternative that we have on a weekend for those staff members or students who it's either their sixth day, seventh day, but it falls on a weekend and there's nowhere to go get tested. So we are having that here on Sundays. We had it on Monday and quite a good turnout for, for that. And we'll have it again this Sunday. So I want to thank them. They're doing a great job. All right.
So moving on to fifteen point one, I think this is supposed to be contract update information and credit card summary. Any questions or on that? No? Then fifteen point two, information regarding recent eye ready diagnostic exams and results.
So we have Ms. Wolf, who is going to give you some information. I think you have seen the slides that she has prepared. There are quite a few of them, but she will go through these and be, I mean, I mean, will be answering any questions. We've seen them, we've talked about them and now it's something that at a future board meeting, we'll have some further discussion on this information.
There you go. Right. So first, I want to give all the credit for preparing these slides to Jenny Tran, who is our, our manager of assessments and she isn't able to be here tonight because she isn't feeling very well. But she has prepared all of this. And so these are our winter results, comparing them to the fall. And there are a couple of things I want to say before we just start going through the slides. And one is that I think we're getting better at giving the eye ready. If you remember, last year was our first year and we gave it remotely and there are all sorts of challenges with that. Now, all the kids have taken it in person twice. And so we feel that, and some of them at the spring of last year, so this is their third time taking it in person, that they're more reliable. We know that they're taking them, taking the assessments themselves without getting help at home. And in the comparison that we're taking a look at, as we look at these slides, it's really important to take a look at the blue line and see what the blue line is doing because in most cases, it's moving in the right direction. But in some, we're not pleased with, with the lack of progress. And so we want to talk about that as well. So with that, what we have here are the number of students who took the test. And this is actually quite a few more than took the test last spring. And so we have close to ninety percent of the students, if not closer to ninety nine percent of the students actually taking the test. And it's about thirteen percent of these students who are taking the test in Spanish, in math. And so they are included in these scores. The, the reading assessment is now available in Spanish, but it didn't, it wasn't an, an alternative for the students to take the reading in English or in Spanish. They had to take both and many of them did. We don't have the Spanish results yet because it was the first time the Spanish language arts assessment had been given. And so they're still working out what the comparability are the scores and all of that. And so as soon as they have that, they will be giving that to us and I will share that with you. Oh, why aren't, why aren't we moving? Well, and that's the end of the presentation. There you go. Okay, so now we're going to take a look at the reading scores. And again, keeping our eye on the blue line. And so what we're taking a look at here is the comparison of how the students did in September to how they did in December. Okay, and so the orange line is the, the fall score and the blue line is the winter score. They will take this exam one more time in March. And then students grades three and up will take the casp in late April. So this is meant to be predictive of the casp and we'll see, because we didn't give the casp in the last couple of years. And so we'll, we'll see a little bit later this spring, how much information this gives us in terms of that exam. But what we see here across the grade levels are students, more students are achieving at mid or above grade level in reading by the time they took their, their second diagnostic. For the early on grade level, so these were students who are at that beginning level of grade level. And again, this was compared from, from the fall to the winter. Again, we're seeing the blue line is, is surpassing the orange line and so it's moving in the right direction. For the students who are one grade below level in reading, we want to see the blue line below the orange line, right? Want to see a drop in these scores. And in many cases we do, but in some cases, we also see a kind of a very little drop, right? It's not, not completely significant at some of the grade levels. Where we see a bigger drop though, is in the students who are two grade levels below and the students who are three grade, grade levels below. So this is good, right? So that more students moved up, whether they made it all the way up to at grade level is, is unlikely, but they probably went from three grade levels to two or one grade level below. So they're moving in the right direction in reading. And again, this is all students. This is a composite of all students. And so this is looking at the same information only sideways. Right? So it's a bit easier to compare. And this is looking at that same information again, yet with numbers. And I think it also reflects sort of the sobering, although we saw growth, we see in, in the pie chart here, the gray is the students who didn't make much growth at all, right? And again, there's many reasons for this, but it's still not something that we're satisfied with. So this is reading. And now we're going to look at math where we see very similar results. Where at mid or above grade level, across the grade levels, we see an increase. We see the blue line surpassing the orange line and an increase also on the early on grade level. So this is all, once again, good news and we see kind of a flattening out of the students who are one grade level below. But we do see a bigger drop of the students who are two or more grade levels below and three or more grade levels below. So again, this is really good information that students who are farther behind at the beginning of the year are moving up. Again, they may not all be, have moved up to grade level yet, but they're moving up so that they're closer to grade level. And again, this information is what we just saw, only looking at it sideways and not looking at it by grade level, but looking at it as a composite. And again, this is the numbers of the students for math with a large number of the students not making much growth. Not, are not changing. They may have made some growth within the level, but they didn't change levels. So now to show you the disaggregated information for English learners and our next component will be students with disabilities. So our, our English learners made very little growth. And so this is an area of concern that we need to take a careful look at. And in a few minutes, I'll talk about some of And in a few minutes, I'll talk about some of the steps that we're taking. We see some movement of the students who are far below, moving up, you know, hopefully up to not so far below grade level. But we see very few students who are mid or above grade level or early on grade level. There's no change for reading. And again, we see that reflected in this chart. And for math, we see something very similar. We see very few children who are English learners who are at or above grade level. And we do see an increase in the number of students who are at one grade level below and to right, that there's some diminishing of three to two. Hopefully they're moving up to one grade level below, but they haven't moved into at or above grade level for English learner. And again, that same information is reflected in a pie chart. And we see very similar kind of a pattern with our students with disabilities. There are a few more students who are at or above grade level in reading than, than the English learners. And again, similar parts are not much growth as reflected by the gray. And then in math. So again, the, the numbers of students who are three or more grade levels below are diminishing. And so that's really good news, but we're not moving more children into at or above grade level. And this information is a composite, only just with numbers and not just with charts. And so that you can see actual percentages of numbers of the students EL, all students and then EL and students with disabilities who are at the different levels. That's reading. This is math and again, very similar patterns. And I think what we probably want to spend some time talking about is what, what are we going to do with this information? Right? So one of the things that's happening right now, this week and next week is that we have iReady trainers who are going to each of the school sites and working with each staff in looking at the data, talking about what they're seeing in the trends of the data, talking about the resources that are available in iReady and doing an analysis for the grade levels, for the classroom levels. This is one of the supports that iReady provides to us as part of our contract with them is that the onsite support. And we know from the past that this has been very helpful training for the teachers to, to really sit down and look at the data and to analyze the data for their class as well as their grade level, as well as the school, and then breaking it down within this different student groups. So that's happening in these next couple of weeks at each school site. And, and part of that is helping the teachers look at what are the resources and tools in iReady. And one of those is the individual student lessons called MyPath. And when students finish an assessment, the iReady puts them on what is called MyPath, which provides them with individualized lessons based on what the results of their exams are and can provide some, you know, center work or some, some additional supports to help catch them up. It also provides reports to the teachers about what are some of the prerequisites that the students might be missing in order for them to help catch them up. And this will be information that we're using with the tutors. We're going to be starting our tutoring program in February. And part of the resource package that we'll be giving them is, you know, that understanding of this resource that is available in iReady as they're preparing to teach a lesson to their class. They'll be able to put out reports of the students based on these diagnostic results of what are some of the areas that they're missing in terms of their background skill, knowledge and development that the tutors can work with them to help catch them up. So they'll be more successful in their instructional lessons. We're continuing with the work that we've already started in working with teacher leaders at the different schools in reading and in math. And that the plan with that is that teachers then go back to their school sites and share at their grade level groups, at their PLC meetings and their staff meetings, some strategies. And as, as I just mentioned, we're beginning a tutoring program. And we're also looking, starting soon, we plan to see what we can do to really we, we met today with our reading specialists at each school site to look to see what are some of the strategies that they're using that they would recommend. And we can bring those together and start doing some additional training. One of the challenges that we face is not having much time available with teachers for professional development. And so we need to find alternative ways besides bringing people together. We do have, we offer after school trainings, but people tend to be really tired these days after school. And so they're not being widely attended. And so we're looking, can we film little clips and put them in the newsletters and send them out? Have little Google classrooms or classes and provide stipends for teachers to watch trainings and attend trainings. And there, it's not as robust as we would like to have time with the teachers to really share and what are some best practices as well as do trainings in some areas that we feel we may not have done enough training in the past few years, perhaps, in, in teaching reading and in teaching math that we can identify and support. Because there's no reason that there are some children who are progressing and others who are not, right? And so we need to really focus on our English learners and our students with disabilities. And what are the strategies that work with students? And make sure that our teachers feel comfortable using them and get the support and the coaching to use them in their classrooms and feel successful. Because we know that this is on us, it's on us to make this happen. Questions?
Do you have any comments or questions?
I do just have a question of you could just tell us what, I know the difference on slide number 30. It says delta. What does that mean?
I'm sorry, Cecilia, I can't hear you very well. On slide number three?
Thirty.
Thirty.
It's the delta, it's the difference.
Oh, 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 so those are the numbers. So for example, I'm sorry, probably giving everybody a little seasick here. So the percentage of students, so if we look at reading, the percentage of students overall who are at mid or above grade level in the fall was 18% of all of the students who are at mid or above grade level in reading of all the students in the district. And in the winter, 25% of all of the students who are at mid or above grade level. And so it improved by seven.
So it's just a difference. I mean, I, I could see it from the chart that it is a difference, but I had just never seen the actual word. And so I just
Oh, oh, yeah, this is different. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the difference.
Coming from an English
Yeah, sorry. It's a math term. I didn't know it either. Had to call it Jenny.
Yeah, we could say difference, but we say delta.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say I could see that it was a difference, but I had never seen the actual word.
The word. Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I, does the definition of mid or above grade level change during, from fall, winter? Like if you were, does it progress because there, there's been more instruction happening?
Yes. Yeah. Yes. To give you the short answer. So it's part of the, the analytics, right, of how they figure this out. And it also incorporates the expectation for student growth for an average growth. And so it figures that into, so it's not just like a number. It's also part of a larger calculation that I can't explain. But if Jenny were here, she could.
And so no change means that they've learned something, but not enough to actually change the bucket level that iReady puts them in over the course of the time. Okay.
Yeah, and, and maybe not learned very much.
Right.
Right. Yeah, but it doesn't mean, you know, zero growth or learning at all.
Right.
Yeah, it didn't show up on the, on the analytics.
Should we throw out comments now or are we just doing a question? Thanks for putting the data together. I think it's really important to look at it. The lessons learned, of course, is the most valuable part at the end. So I appreciate all the time that you put on that. And to Jenny Tran, I hope you feel better. Thank you for putting together the slides for us tonight. And of course, I'll, you know, everybody involved with making sure that these assessments come through. The cohort chart, pie chart, I don't think we saw that the last time we've looked at the data that talks about the number of students that are moving and, and how that works. That's great. I really, that, I found that a very informative slide. I like the way that information was put together. And, you know, I'm hoping that when we get down to reviewing the LCAP, because we have growth goals in our LCAP for both just the general student body, but also for targeted student groups, we'll be able to look at the strategies that are in the LCAP. And I know we've funded them all, but we may not have been able to fill them all or put them all into practice yet. It'd be really interesting to see how that stuff is coming together with our, with our LCAP goals, which so clearly align with the data and the conversations that you're having tonight around that. So, you know, I know the LCAP will come again later, later this year. And we're starting to talk about the next LCAP soon. So, you know, I, I think that that'll be, that'll be really helpful. Yeah, I was talking with Dr. Baker about this earlier today, so I just wanted to mention it here. With, with only a quarter of our eighth grade students actually being above grade level and with the iReady being again used for high school placement. That's, it's just, it's, it's really, I find that really problematic. And I'm worried that, you know, there's going to be a set of that population that's going to be missed, misaligned into their high school career. I don't know if it's in our realm to be able to do anything about it. I'm just wanted to voice it as, as, as a real concern that, that, you know, this, this test, and they're told that, of course, it's going to matter for high school placement, but it's also meant to be diagnostic and not, not high stakes. And I, I just noticed that, that there was, there's about a quarter of the eighth grade students above grade level. And, and that means 75% of our eighth graders may be getting set up for a more difficult pathway through high school.
So as our discussion, as we had our discussion, one of the items of the discussion was to involve parents with the testing results and how for them to advocate at the high school for them not to be placed as Liz Wolf and I, Ms. Wolf and I know, where they could be placed and how you can do that as a parent. Advocate whether you, whether you're an English language learner, English speaking. There is a method to do this. The information that comes to parents at the information night for eighth graders going into high school. I know they've been doing it virtually, but in the past, what we have experienced is it's at a level where parents sometimes have difficulty comprehending what is being said and how to maneuver through the high school. So we can, I can work with Liz and I can also work with some others in our department along with Stanford to help us put together something. Because as I mentioned before, in the Stanford Collaborative, I've not come to, to report to you. This is the other collaborative that we belong to in regard to English language learners. And they want to do this report and we just haven't had the time to, to put them on an agenda yet. But we can work with them on how we can work with our parents. These, this is the matter in how you advocate. You see, here's the results of what your child has. This is what the teacher has said where your child should be. Now, this is what you need to do when you go to the high school. If you see it's done differently. Because there has been year upon year upon year where we are giving tests. As a matter of fact, have they started yet again, Liz? Because it's, but now it's January. Don't they start in February?
Yeah, they haven't started yet, but it will be pretty soon.
And that was a, a big thing that we, as the elementary districts, had a concern with. Because it takes up all this portion of time. We're still instructing, so we're not, they're not where they should be. Even if you're at grade level, you're, there's still some things that you haven't learned yet. So we wanted that test, number one, to be either later or to let us do it anecdotally as comments to the counselors or whoever does placement there. We didn't get anywhere with that. I thought we were going to have less tests, but what I found out from staff development is that there weren't less tests last school year. So there's some work that we need to do with the high school district. And they were always amenable to collaborate. And as Lisa did point out earlier, maybe it's time for us to have a joint board meeting, which did happen. The last one we had was maybe what, four years ago? Yeah, because Jim was still at the high school. Jim was still the superintendent. Yeah, so it is really, maybe it's time to have that and to also bring in the information that we have from our Stanford Collaborative, which they're part of.
You know, and, and I was thinking, I mean, particularly with this, the next couple of years of students, because they're, they've had the disadvantage of the at-home learning last year and just everything around COVID. So I think that would be good. You know, do you mind if I make just a, so, so in addition, sort of a couple of other sort of comments slash questions? Well, first of all, thank you very much for putting all the data together and all the work. And, you know, I think all of us feel some level of frustration, right? Because we know how hard everybody's working. I mean, every board meeting, you know, we talk about all the different things. We talked about all the mental health that, you know, and SEL that we're doing at the beginning of this meeting, all the professional development. We know how hard all our teachers are working and so, so anyway, it's frustrating to see the data. I mean, I just, you know, I think we all feel that. It's sort of like, you know, a third or sort of at that early and mid and above. And then a third or at that one grade level and about a third or two and three levels below. I mean, those are gross overestimations. But so, so questions that I had is in addition to some of the remedies that you talked about, which I think are good, you know, the different things you're talking about, doing the tutoring and working with the teachers on the data and all of that. And our reading resource specialist, I was wondering if we've looked at the data in relevance with attendance both last year and this year. We do have some students who are not in person, so they are doing virtual. You know, which students are doing after school and extended day learning? So they're giving, getting some additional enrichment. They're getting language acquisition and all of that with the extended day. And then summer school. And in part, I'm thinking, you know, is our six hours a day with the student, five days a week, is it enough to move some of these students who are three grade levels below? We know there's a lot that the teachers can do, but it seems like, you know, we need a lot of our other partners. And I'm, I'm particularly interested in attendance, because I know we have had, you know, students not being able to attend, either choosing not to attend because concerns with health or not being able to attend because they're quarantined. So, you know, I don't want to cause a lot of extra work. I don't necessarily need to see this data. I mean, I'm interested in it, but I just hope we're reflecting on it because there might be some big ahas there where we could, you know, use that data and additional funding we get. I know we're talking about wanting to do more extended day learning for some of the students. Because they have, you know, they've missed out a lot. The last year has been hard. So anyway, you know, thank you for everything you're doing. And, and, you know, if you can think about those other areas and if it is possible to kind of look at that in reflection to this data, it might be useful, might tell us something.
And I think it is. I think it's, it's, it's working with a database in Power School and figuring out. I, I wouldn't be able to figure it out.
Right, right, but somebody.
Take a look at it, see what the correlations are with some of these other components. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and it, you know, might help us in, if, if in fact, like, let's say it's extended day learning and summer school. We saw a lot there, you know, it might help us in our advocacy efforts for more funding down the road. And then we know attendance is just important and that would help in our conversations with parents and students that, you know, you need to be in person in class. If you want to keep up, it's, there's just no other way. So anyway, all right, well, thank you very much.
Amy could help. Amy Gernstein and her group could help with this.
Yeah.
They're very good in the realm of the attendance piece.
And the after-school stuff, right?
School piece. So Amy may have some of that information for us.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments to make on this. I think a lot of it's been said already. But thank you, Liz, for the presentation and Jenny for the data. I, I'm a data nerd. I love looking at it. We spent a lot of time in the MTSS leadership team looking at this information exactly. So that was really good to talk through a lot of it with my subcommittee too. So just thank you. And, you know, we, we know we have a lot of work to do and we have a team that's committed to that work. So I think that's great.
And same here. Thank you for the presentation. And then I just wanted to clarify, did I understand correctly? Dr. Baker, you said you were perhaps discussing with Mike regarding the iReady test and maybe given some kind of explanation to the parents? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, it's number one, how to Well, it's number one, how to analyze, read the information and know what it's telling you. That's number one. But number two, especially if you're an eighth grader with the test that you're taking for the high school, that you understand those results and what those results say compared to maybe what the site administrator and the and the and the teachers of the students of that eighth grader. This eighth grader needs to be put in a pathway that is A through G as opposed to getting into a different pathway, which will not get them there or maybe delay that for a while. Or in other words, to turn them off to education and want to drop out. That's how we need to educate our parents. So I will need to look very carefully at the tests that are given by the high school. We will get the reason, well, the parents get the results. We get the results also, but sometimes it's not as timely as the parents going to be for us. So I need to take, we need to take very good aim at the timing. And then also Sarah Cullum, who works in staff development, is on top of this stuff and really meet with her and see what is the timing when the results come out? Can we get the results at the same time the parents get them? So that we can go through and explain, then also meet with the teachers. Okay, this is the pathway where this child may be going. Can you give me further anecdotal data of why they shouldn't be going in this manner and where should we be replacing them? In other words, we do more of the the lifting to give to the counselors. And I'm assuming it's the counselors that place the students. I'm not sure anymore. I haven't had a meeting.
A couple of weeks ago, they were talking about placing their English learners in the school system. And so they've started revising those criteria as well, much to the benefit of the English learners.
Right.
And so I think the potential is there for looking at this criteria. I think now they're more open to to looking at wanting to get kids on track to graduate in A to G classes, right? Yeah, and not all remedial classes and then not, you know, graduated.
But it's it's when a parent finds out that that's where you are in a remedial class, you don't have to accept that. And we need to educate our parents in that manner.
Yes. And so with that said, educating parents, can we perhaps do it at an earlier grade? I mean, I don't know, maybe, you know, maybe not K, but maybe yes, so the parents can actually understand it from the beginning, rather than waiting until the students are in eighth grade. And at that time, it may just be a little too late, especially if they didn't ask the proper questions when they met with the teachers, or maybe they didn't meet with the teachers. I mean, the teachers do have, you know, a lot on their hands and maybe they obviously are not reaching out to the parents, letting them know, you know, this is how we can help your student or this is how you can help the student. So perhaps if we can start at, I don't know, maybe third grade so that they have a few years to actually catch up if they need to.
All right, we could try. Yeah, because as you say, when when you get to eighth grade, if you've been with us since kindergarten, that's nine years, right? But what about those students who come in a third or a fourth grader? Or those students who have been with us for nine years and they're still, you know, three years behind. You know, three levels of of reading behind, let's say they're below three levels. Parents need to be aware of, you know, this is what has occurred. Yes, your child may be three levels behind, but maybe there's a special need or some other item that's brought them to that manner. So we need to see what they need to do to get the support that is needed to get them into that A through G track. Because what the research is showing for ourselves and and what Stanford learned through the Gardner Center, those students who were not successful at the high school level, yes, we're two and three years behind in language arts or math and math, or maybe just one. But at the same time, they were put in a program which, for lack of a better term, dumbed down, where there's this program which is called System 180, or I don't know. It's something that was used many, many years ago. It's boring. Read, thank you, Read 180. It it's boring. It has nothing to do with, you know, what kids are exposed to at this point in time and want to learn or interested in. Turn off. Don't come to school. And you end up dropping out. Now that is changing. I have to give them credit. That is changing. That is changing. But you still don't want them to be in a pathway where it's going to be remedial. So we we just need to, you know, educate our parents on, no, I don't want that. My child deserves such.
John, can I add? We actually had thought about trying to find a position this year for an academic counselor.
Yeah.
Person who would meet with families.
Yeah.
We never found anybody, but it was a position in the LCAP to look at meeting with seventh grade. So it'd probably be better to start even before that, right? But to meet with seventh grade parents and talk to them about the trajectory of their students and what they need to do to be able to get into the classes in high school. And so we can keep that position in there and and try it again next year and see if we can find somebody. Because we thought that would that would help at least as a start to meet with the parents and educate them about things to be careful of it and be aware of as they enroll their students in in high school.
That's great news, Liz. I think in the past, we've had different little programs here and there. There was the mother daughter program that was funded by the county office of ed. And I know that Familias Unidos also does a lot of that. They used to have some of those chats also in the family centers. So maybe if you can't find the position, maybe that's another place where we can start. And especially now with webinars. When I first got on the board, we used to have them at back to school night where you talk to the parents and tell them, hey, this is what's happening. So I think it I like Cecilia's idea again of starting earlier instead of waiting. But I do think that we need to help them advocate for their students. And.
You know, Maria, one other thing, just on your point, maybe the, and, you know, kind of going back to the high school, maybe there's an opportunity, particularly with the virtual world, to work with their, some of their high school counsel, their academic counselors. And maybe they would be willing to even just do a Zoom with parents that we could record, you know, that talks about, here's the things that your student needs to have and be prepared. And this is what we look for to place in class, you know, something like that. That could be a nice collaborative and it probably wouldn't take them that much time because they're already having to do that one on one with their students as they enter high school. Anyway, just an idea. Yeah.
Well, there's also that group that Michelle Ramon does with the high school as well. And the high schools hired parent coordinators and that was way back. That was part of the thing they were supposed to do as well. Talk to the parents about their students and how we get from elementary to high school on to college. And I think they dropped that. Anyway, thank you, Liz. Thank you, everybody, for your work. Moving on to correspondence. Think we got some. Well, we got some emails on the Mandarin immersion and child nutrition. Let's see, other businesses suggested items for future agendas. None. Okay. Board agenda calendar changes. None except saving the 28th of February. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Yay, thank you, guys.